All right, good evening. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order here on December 8th. My daughter's seventh birthday, by the way. So, I'll give a shout out to, oh, and Dr. Elvey's birthday today as well. That's informal before we open up the meeting, so. Happy birthday, Dr. Elvey. So, we'll go ahead and call this meeting here to order. Mr. Kosher, would you please take attendance?
Johnson.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Skelton.
Here.
Boss Ward.
Here.
Winiger.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. If you could please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, any visitors who wish to address the board may do so. We ask that you sign in when you enter the room and please list the topic. If you have not done so, please approach the podium and do. I ask that you refrain from listing any students by name or any personnel by name. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? As a reminder, no action will be taken this evening. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to item A, which is Tanniger Happenings. Mr. Huska.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hope all is well. Okay, so what I handed you is the 25, 26 numbers that we have collected thus far with our fall numbers and so far in the winter, participation numbers in the various activities that we have, all the way from the athletics to the fine arts and some of the clubs that we have offerings at VHS. Very happy with the numbers. They're very steady again this year. Our enrollment's down a little bit at the high school overall, but, you know, numbers as far as activities go are pretty solid. Very happy with that. Just tells us kids are still getting involved in things and that's the most important part. I will entertain any questions you might have.
So, the question marks, I see those are for like spring sports, things that aren't yet, so those are just zeros then as far as the sum goes?
Yep.
Okay. I'm just curious, I see there are some question marks in the 24, 25. Is that?
Um...
The track is still question marks?
Yep, that's just an oversight on my part. We do have those numbers.
No worries.
Uh-oh. Overall, is participation up, down, stable?
I think it's very stable.
Thank you.
Probably, you know, we're probably in that anywhere from 78 to 81 percent of the kids at the high school are involved in some activity.
That's true.
And we're going to be in that same range.
Good deal. By the way, Joel says not.
All right.
We've been having a lot of talk too around kind of club sports.
Yep.
Have you done any surveys just to see in addition to what they're doing within the school district, what they're doing outside, such as like club volleyball or going up to, you know, Sioux Falls and playing basketball?
As far as numbers go?
Just like surveying the kids just to get an idea of what maybe you're not reporting, but they're also doing on?
Oh, yeah. There's the club volleyball, then there's all the AAU basketball, and you name it, they have it. We do have kids participating in that pretty much year round. So, those that want to do that extra off-season stuff, yeah, we do have several kids that want to do that.
I think it was last month we had a group from the Science Olympiad.
Yep.
And I see that their numbers have increased. Is that the same group that we?
Yep. They're all under the same umbrella with the Quiz Bowl Science Group. Yeah, they're all kind of, all in the same group.
Okay.
Yep.
A big increase there from past years.
Yes, yes.
So, thank you.
I think we had the elementary's teachers, or the teacher group come as well, right? Get created?
Educators, right?
Educators, yeah.
I think they were, yeah, each of the last two. I think maybe one was at each of the last meetings, maybe?
So, that one's not on here yet either, right?
Mr. Huska, just a question on, I know we're working with families trying to improve the communication home to, you know, let kids know what's happening in their schedule with also moms and dads. What's, what are we doing with Parent Square to maybe use that differently?
Yeah, our plan is to kind of, I've been using the winter sports because there's only four of them in the fall. It's a little bigger group and it was a little harder to roll that out with that large of a group, but the winter sports here, we're going to try to get each group, each team. So, Jay Drake would be in charge of a team for the boys' basketball. John Brooks would be a group, so on and so forth. And then, we would develop just that ability to communicate through Parent Square. It takes away, most of them, I mean, there's Google Classroom, there's regular text and emails and all that stuff. The attempt is to try to streamline all of that through Parent Square now that we have that and have the ability to use that. So, that's the, that's the objective there. That way, it's a kind of all one-stop shop there.
Good, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Huska?
No.
I'm just happy that we offer so many things for students to explore, so thank you.
Yeah, I think that's the key. And I appreciate you all knowing and accepting that and really giving us the tools to be able to do that because it does, it does impact kids way more than we think and their ability to do well in school and be a part of something. And our fall sports, again, were very successful. We second with the boys' golf and fourth with tennis. In fact, the only three teams above us were St. Thomas More, Rapid City Christian, and Sioux Falls Christian. So, of the public schools. We did really good. I don't know if that's a T-shirt or not, but...
I see that, I love public school shirt right there, so.
Yeah, exactly. So, but region, across country, every, all of the activities that we were in this fall was another very successful, which just, you know, points to the good people we have in charge of those things and the great kids we get to help. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on here, we'll move to our approving our agenda and conflict disclosures. Item A, are there any agenda changes, Dr. Elvey?
There are not.
Wonderful. I would take a motion to approve the agenda. First by Mark.
Second.
Second by Ryan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pull same sign, motion passes. Next up here, we have indication of conflict of interest per South Dakota Codified Law 3-23. This is Rachel, and I have none.
Carol, I have none.
This is Jake, and I have none.
Mark, and I have none.
Ryan, and I have none.
Wonderful, thank you. We'll be moving on here to our consent agenda. We have approval of our minutes, resignations, new hires, open enrollments, and bills. First up, we have our meeting minutes from November 10th. Resignations from Tom Heisinger, high school, middle school football, Haley Carson, PT, custodian, Mercedes Hoffman, sped aide, and new hire Renee Kimball for the middle school secretary. Look at that, we're getting it up on our screens today. Wonderful. Would anything like to be pulled from the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, I would take a motion to approve. First by Mark.
Second.
Second by Carol. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pull same sign, motion passes. And while we have Mr. Heisinger in here, thank you for your years of service to the football. We are in need of no unfinished businesses, so we'll be moving on to new business. We have items A through D, and I believe we should be able to make a motion for those four items in one. We need to set our school board election date for June 2nd, 2026. Mr. Kosher, you can maybe talk about same thing, which is item B, which is approval of the combined election agreement with Clay County and the city of Vermillion for 26 election.
Yeah, A and B really do go together there. There were some law changes with elections for this coming year. Doesn't impact us too much, except for a few timelines. One of them being the notice of vacancies that we normally would publish once it's into the actual calendar year. Will come out in the paper here at the end of December, which is why we have to declare our election date a little bit earlier than we normally would have. But then, it also has the combined election agreement in there that we have with Clay County and City of Vermillion, which are really great partners for us running the elections on the even years that we, so it's great to be able to take advantage of those partnerships that we have with them.
Wonderful, I agree, thank you. Next up here is item C then, which is approval of the FY '26 budget supplement. Mr. Kosher.
Yes. If you recall, the last several years, we have had a budget supplement around this time, and it's been much larger than this. Most of the time, that was due to either one-time dollars that we had from ESAR-related funds or spending down certain funds. We're now, hopefully, this is our normal course of business right now, that these budget supplements are pretty slim. But there are a few items on here in our general fund, increasing the elementary teacher salary. The reason for that is because halftime of one of our preschool teachers will now have to be shifted to the general fund there because of the preschool enrollment numbers. We also have some supplements there for instructional software. Those were items that we had previously been paying out of some of our federal programs that we had. With some of the uncertainty around those federal programs, we decided that this would be a good year to pull those back as just a local expense so that we can focus that on personnel for those expenses. And then, we had a supplement there for the electricity rate change that we had for our building electricity. In capital outlay, we have an increase there for middle school curriculum. This was just an, we had some additional funds budgeted for high school curriculum above and beyond what was necessary, but not quite enough in the middle school, so a supplement there for the middle school curriculum. And then, we had some equipment needs for our buildings that we needed to take care of during the school year here rather than wait. So, that is what the school nurse increased there is out of capital outlay. Pretty minor budget supplement comparing to previous years.
Any questions?
So, is the electricity like one of our utility bills, or is that for some infrastructure? Or can you talk a little bit about that?
It's one of our ongoing utility bills, and unfortunately, this is closer to what the budget should be going forward for planning for that elementary.
Thank you.
Moving on here then to item D, which is acknowledgement of the state minimum wage effective January 1st, which will be $11.85. Any questions or concerns on items A through D? If not, I would take a motion to approve. First by Jacob.
Second.
Second by Carol. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pull same sign, motion passes. Next up here, we have reports. Dr. Elvey?
Yes, we'll just, I think Daniel's got a few pictures for us up there as I talk. First of all, I'd just like to, oh, there's some pictures here of our middle school and our elementary staff. They thought they'd have some fun with our kids on the 67th day of school, so you imagine with 6-7 came out a lot. But our teachers were good sports and they played along, and they had our Caged Creations class, Entrepreneur class at school, makes matching staff shirts for the staff at the high school, middle school, and elementary school. So, that's a picture of them having some fun with the kids. Anyway, so we'd like to thank some people tonight. Again, Gina Marzola and Tiffany Jones at the elementary school. Over the last month, you know, this prior, right after the government shutdown happened, you know, a month or so ago, and went into its full 30 days or so that it was going on, there was a lot of insecurity about food and things for kids and things. So, these two counselors, along with others in our buildings, took the initiative to start a Tanniger takeout type event where kids and families could come and get things from the school, from our food pantry. They asked for donations and they received hygiene products and laundry detergent, even clothes and things. So, they were able to enhance our RAC program that you know is alive and well at our middle school and do some things for that special time during that government shutdown when there were some extra needs in the community. So, I wanted to thank them for that. I'd like to thank too this evening our Representative Chris Casson and Representative Bill Shorma and, of course, Senator Sidney Davis for spending some time at our school today. They spent some time with our administrative team after school, talking about the things that are going well in our district as well as things that might be concerns. Upcoming budget from the governor was discussed. A 0% increase is being promoted at this point at the, at the, from the governor's budget, but we have a lot of friends in the legislature who are going to try to do better for us. But there's, there's a lot of challenges that the legislators will face this session, so they came and visited with our administrative team and then spent time with our school board as well, talking about things from homeschooling to truancy to, you know, reporting of kids that we have for assessments and some of the accountability measures we go through a school. Property tax relief will be a big topic at the legislative session, which has implications potentially for school districts because that's our major funding source for funding K-12 education in South Dakota. So, it was just nice to have them together with us for a few hours to talk about that, and I appreciate their time this evening. The picture, I think Daniel's going to put that up there, talks a little bit about, last month, I gave a report to the Vermillion Public Schools Foundation about our outdoor learning spaces and some of the things that we were able to do with the Ofsted grant that we earned from the Vermillion Public Schools Foundation. And that included some equipment purchases, large outdoor games, art supplies, tables, benches, shade structures, a small stage for the elementary, lots of cool sandbox items and totes and things. But basically, just a space that was created with our Finland Transform Ed project from last year, if you remember. Kids throughout the district were paired together to talk about outdoor learning spaces and what that could look like, and it could be from leisure to music to arts to reading or anything in between. And so, we took the top 12 designs of that and took elements from each one of those, and we were able to, by the generosity of the Ofsted grant from the Vermillion Public School Foundation, be able to buy materials and things to make those spaces come alive at the elementary school, middle school, and the high school. So, we wanted to thank the foundation for their support with that. We already shared a little bit that Governor Roden has his budget address, or gave his budget address last week. The 0% increase to education that's being projected is obviously a concern at this point, but there's a long legislative session left, and we'll be working together with our local folks to really come up with some very targeted points of interest and bullet points that our legislators can take to peer as well as our lobbyists to talk about why it's important to see that number go up. A few things for coming up, of course, our winter formal's coming up at the end of the week. Winter break, our Christmas break, will be coming up on December 22nd through January 5th. And our staff will be coming back on January 5th for our full day in-service day. The bulk of that day this year will be designed around AI and its use, ethical use, and practical uses from kids and staff members. That is, was a result of our survey to our staff about what kind of PD would be valuable. And AI was our number one, I guess, selection by the staff that they wanted some, some extra help with. So, we company, are partnering with a group called Compass, the formerly the Thai Office out of Rapid City, and so they'll be sending some representatives down to work with our staff when we come back from Christmas break. Just a reminder that bus passes for second semester will go on sale for our patrons here at the Christmas break, and they're $50 during break, but when we return to school, they move up to $75, so take advantage of the, the break in price there. Just a reminder too, we've had a couple of snow incidences here in the last few weeks. Thankfully, they've all both landed on a weekend, so we haven't had to exercise our school inclement weather plan, which I always appreciate. But just a reminder to folks at home, we always announce that first and foremost through Parent Square, right directly to your phone and to your emails, so make sure that those are up to date, please. But secondly, if you missed that or something is not working there, make sure you check the local TV stations, Dakota First News or Kelo or some of those locals, as well as WA and NAX and KVHT, because we'll put those on as soon as we can possibly know the weather forecast. And also, just a reminder that our, our plan is, is that if we happen to have an inclement snow day where we miss school the entirety of the day, the first one is a freebie for the students, which they love. They won't make that day up. Staff will have that Mac staff makeup day at the end of the year, which they love because they need that time at the end of the year. But if we happen to miss a second or a third day, we go into the calendar a bit, and we would take away the early dismissal PLT dates on March 11th and April 2nd. We would have full days of school there and make up some of those hours at that time. And if we happen to have a third or a fourth day, we would consider making that up at the end of the year, but the board would certainly have an opportunity to have input on that calendar there. Last couple things, last week, I was, attended a conference on the Education Commission of the States. It was a representative, some 37 states were at this event, and basically, there are Secretary of Education, people from each state, some superintendents, and state legislators. And the, really, the discussion talked really about attendance in K-12. In our nation, has become really kind of chronic. We have students in schools throughout our country that are missing 20, 30, 40 days of school, and of course, the negative and severe impacts that that has on their, their education now, but their future lives as well. So, all across the country, schools are talking about that. So, when I get to these meetings, I'll be able to bring hopefully some ideas that other states and other schools are trying, and we can share them with our friends here in South Dakota. Funding formulas, school choice, and community school partnerships were the other big topics, trying to, to make schools more welcoming and getting community partnerships to help make schools look more like real life for kids so that they see the relevance in K-12 education, and then they can make a decision about their futures, whether it's college-bound, military work, tech school, whatever, whatever's right for their future. So, we're excited to be a part of that. And finally, we've been, there've been a few questions about inclement weather, but also, how do we handle the cold at school? What is our threshold for kids going outside for recess and things like that? By, our general practice is, like many schools, that if it's zero or above, we will be going outside. If it's below zero, we tend to stay inside and have indoor recesses. What we would like to ask from our community though is, we do have students that aren't really prepared for even zero. That can be pretty cold for 20 minutes outside. So, we're asking that if you happen to have snow pants or boots or gloves or some of those things that, sitting around your house that no longer fits someone, consider donating those to the school, and we would find a student that would be in need of those, those types of items because some of our kiddos come and have either forgotten them or just really aren't prepared. So, we've had several great donations so far from groups and individuals that we will, we'll announce some of those at the next meeting, but we want to thank people for thinking about our kiddos that are out for recess. Outdoor recess is important. Like we learned from our Finland experiment, those kids go out to recess, whether it's below zero or not, in Finland. And so, we've talked about how does that look, about getting kids breaks, fresh air, just time out of the building's important. So, that's an ongoing discussion we're having in the district. So, that's all I have.
Are there any committee reports as well to share?
Yes, I attended the Vermillion Public School Foundation meeting on November 11th, excuse me, November 19th, and as Dr. Elvey mentioned, he made the presentation on those outdoor learning spaces, and, yeah, it was really well done, I think very well received, so I think they were happy to see all those updates. There was some discussion about some possible external auditing requirements that they may have now going forward, so kind of talking about what would be needed, what sort of cadence that would have to be on, and so forth. And the, the mobile planetarium for the high school actually arrived the day of that meeting, so that was a fun topic of discussion. So, talked about some possible partnerships, maybe with USD's Astronomy Club and other, and ways to get the word out about that resource, like maybe a plain talk article, things like that. Also discussed supporting a possible guest speaker opportunity for the high school and also looking at some new scholarship opportunities in the community.
Okay, so, on November 20th, the Associated School Board Directors met to finalize what changes would be made or proposed for the standing positions and also what resolutions were presented to the delegates. The delegates met the next day on the 21st, and there are only three changes to standing positions. Now, those are positions that we don't normally change. They carry over from year to year. And the three changes were, first one involved in investment in education, we're requesting the state to explore new funding sources. The second one was in non-public school funding, and we're asking the legislature to consider prohibiting any federal funding going to non-public schools. And the third one was student achievement, which calls for student retention until graduation of GED or age 18. And all of those were passed. For the resolutions, we have a resolution for the compulsory school attendance to be moved to the standing positions, and that passed almost unanimously. Decision-making authority regarding transgender legislation was amended to recognize the fact that it was, it's currently illegal, but when that law changes, it goes back into effect. Legal and financial protection for compliance with state law passed. Board and bond elections were amended. Board member recall process was amended. The financial accountability waivers was amended. In other words, these all passed. Protecting school district valuations. There was a bill to fund CTE, which is your career technical education. It went down. There were a lot of people fought for that, spoke up for that, but by and large, everyone thought that that was included in our standing positions already. So, it wasn't needed, unfortunately. I was one of them contesting it. Suspension of teacher pay accountabilities was adopted. Property tax reduction or repeal was amended. A tax collection administration fee was deleted. That went down. Federal mandates for funding was amended, and the school nutrition flexibility was also amended or passed. So, that is a summary of everything that was talked about. Any questions?
Too bad on that CTE.
Yes, yes. We weren't real happy with that.
Well, thanks again too, Mark, for driving up to pier and back.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
It's a lovely drive.
Lovely drive. Jacob, do you have any notes from our personnel meeting by chance with you?
No one is mainly, just kind of thinking ahead to what the upcoming year will look like, and a lot of unknowns when we had the meeting prior to the budget address. So, was kind of talking, what is the number going to be and how are we going to move forward?
Additionally, just kind of looking at some negotiation dates and what that'll look like in March already, so, since that's around the corner, really. Carol, anything to share? Perfect. Looking ahead to the Boys and Girls Club, they did their youth of the year competition, so I know there were several in the community to help volunteer for that. And if you haven't taken a look at their Facebook page, there was a transformation gift made by Larry Brady, and just want to thank him for his effort in continuing to support our youth in the community. Otherwise here, we can move on then to our financial reports for our funds. Anything, or, Mr. Kosher?
Yeah, financial report in the packet again. I guess I don't have a whole lot to highlight there. We did receive, as we do twice a year, we get larger property tax payments that are made to us, and we did receive those last month, so the balances look significantly higher than they did last month.
Great. Any questions from Mr. Kosher? Seeing none, I would take a motions to approve the funds. First by Mark.
Second.
Second by Carol. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pull same sign, motion passes. Are there any future agenda items anybody has? I think let's keep talking about the weather. I've been looking at some schools up north and kind of what they do for kind of their thresholds, and I know having a combined elementary school does make it tricky with our littlest, but I do think that the right snow gear will go a long ways in kind of getting our kids outside. And ultimately, teachers need a break too, so to be able to get them sent outside, even if it's for 10 minutes of putting, Mark, actually Hannah said she can get dressed in three minutes. Mrs. Beach has been working on them to get their snow gear on. So, three minutes, even if three minutes in, five minutes out, three minutes back, that... in, five minutes out, three minutes back, that fresh air necessary and everybody really needs a break. So let's maybe keep talking about what that looks like. We have a couple of meetings coming up, January twelfth. That's not around MLK week, right? That's the week before that. It's not a Tuesday, right? It's our normal Monday? Perfect. Followed then by February ninth. We are in need of executive session tonight for South Dakota Codified Law one dash two-five dash two for personnel. So I would go ahead and make a motion and enter us into executive session here at seven-thirty. Do I need a motion to approve that? First by Jake, second by Carol. We are now in executive session here at seven-thirty.